All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Good morning this morning.
Morning.
Good morning. See if I can talk today. All right. The agenda, any other?
Um, I got an email. I think you guys also received it on the Bible reading. If we just wanna add that to approve that.
I'll make a motion that we add that on the agenda for is that the? Fourth of July weekend?
Yes.
That's when it usually is, so we'll add that to it if we can.
All right, sounds good. Do I have a second?
I'm second, reasonable.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, prove the minutes from May fifteenth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second.
If a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous carries. All right, claims.
Wow.
Sounds like we got a big one.
We got the last.
Somebody got some paint, the way it looks. I guess I looked through them and I had a eight hundred and sixty-two, six-three-seven-nine-five. Uh, eight-six-two, six-three-seven-nine-five, and drainage was eighteen, eight-fourty-one, thirty.
I'll second those numbers.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
One of the reasons was Ben got a new. Motive maintainer. And harder, the insurance was another big. Part of that was several couple hundred, so that's where you spend that kind of money in a hurry, so. Anyway.
It's true. Big items. All right, um, anything else? Okay, general public concerns. All right, nobody on Zoom? Hey, Ben, you're up.
Morning.
Good morning.
I've got the one thing on the agenda for today to award project LC three-nine-three-five-zero-six. To Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Bryanbeck, Iowa. Uh, they had the low bid last Monday. For the bridge that we called Clear's Bridge. Uh, the bid was three hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, I believe you guys should have a copy of bid tabs for the presenters.
And it's a break turned into a double box.
It's a bridge being turned into a double box. So they'll still have to get inspected like bridges because of the length of it, but we'll eliminate.
Yeah.
And so eliminate the load rating. I think it's a ten bridge rate.
It'll be a good one.
And I think we got good bids.
Yeah, very, very good.
It's shocking like most.
Yeah.
I had, uh, three-twenty-five budgeted, so I was close.
Yep. Well, everything is in order. I would make a motion that we approve the. The award to the project, Peterson Contractors Incorporated. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Is that the fourth ball or what is, what's the timeframe on that again, Ben? You?
Late start date is next May.
Next May?
We did that for flexibility for the contractor. They had a full load this year. Uh, they could just schedule it for next season. But would it be in PCI? I can see them coming in this fall.
Yeah. Never really close.
I'm assuming as long as it's built, that won't be something that is the star.
Right.
The deep is that it is. So, all right.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, unanimous, motion carries. All right. I think you have a visitor.
Yes, I'd like to introduce you all to our new intern. This is Olivia Anderson.
Thanks.
She lives up by Renwick. She started late last week.
Okay.
Just getting her feet wet. Uh, she went out with Dave last week, one or two days, and I started, uh, learning about our GPS surveying equipment. Dave, she's been helping Dave with, uh, driveway estimates. Just starting to look at like I hope and things like that, so.
Okay. All good luck and.
Yeah. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Hey, Linda will be here at eight-fifteen unless we wanna. Can we do that? Okay. We can, um. We have a motion to accept the Bible reading on July, fourth of July. We need to have worded exactly for the.
They agreed twenty-four hours around the clock here on the lawn. Second round.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
They've done it for years.
Oh, yeah.
So. Different.
Provide him with a board or a fan.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries. All right. Discussion, action on cancellation of May twenty-nine, board meeting, that'd be next Monday, Memorial Day.
I say, but we just proved the claim.
Right, we have, it's not a claim.
I believe we can take next week off and enjoy Memorial Day. So I make a motion for cancellation of next week's meeting.
There are motion in a second. Any other discussion? Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries. We wanna go into, um. Graded. Graded levies and set waivers. Sorry.
Oh, and if they have a new one, oh, same. To set the amendment hearing for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three county budget.
Yeah, that was on my email. Yeah.
Yeah, it was on my email. Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Okay.
What was that, Trish? That was?
Um, it's to set the budget amendment hearing for the county budget, um, twenty-two, twenty-three, which is our current one, yes.
Which we talked about last week, right?
Yes, yes. So we just need to.
What's our date possibly?
Calendar we got moved.
Yeah.
Where we have to do it towards timeframe for?
Ten to twenty days, not before ten, not after twenty.
Basically, we have to go two weeks from today.
I already did mine.
Yeah, he did.
Mine has to be done before June.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so.
Two weeks from today.
I would actually, let me see. If we could do the nineteenth would be.
That's enough.
Okay, cause I should have. More exact numbers on spending.
Okay, okay, June nineteenth?
Yeah.
Is nine AM a good time or do you wanna do it sooner?
That's perfect.
Make a motion for the budget amendment hearing for June nineteenth at nine AM.
Any other discussions? Good thing. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, motion carries. Okay. Okay. All right, switch is ready? Well. What about the drainage levies? Is that, how long is that intended? Does that take longer?
All right. Will you say if she's ready?
Turns out there are. That sounds, might affect you. It does.
Well.
Looked into it.
I'm curious to know. If there's one party.
Well, that's why I said my question was, both have to be or just one? So Julie will marry the ten-year youngest. I know. I'm gonna tell her that. Yeah, you don't need to say, she said that.
We need a motion. Hey, we got a motion. In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I know it. Man.
Cold, soft?
I don't know what it is. I'm just sick of allergies. I've never had it this bad. This year is just, I don't know what it is.
It's the fires too.
Oh, well, I got it.
Because when you go out, some days it's just.
Yeah.
Okay. So, these are, um, I did all the numbers, um, the claims and so forth for the. All, um, levies and. I guess we could start first. We have only one joint district that we need to levy. Um, I got with Wright County and. They gave me what numbers they had, so it looks like. On that one, um. It's five dash one thirteen Humboldt Wright. It would be six thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents would be the total. Um, our share is four thousand one hundred and fifteen, fourteen, and Wright's is twenty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-eight. So that's what all we need to levy for.
That's only joint district. For this going on? Do we need to make separate motions on these?
Probably.
I would think so. I think.
Well, to be on the safe side, yeah, for the joint district levies, I would make the motion for approval of a levy for. Joint Humboldt Wright five dash one thirteen Greenwich District, and our share being four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I object. My name's not on here.
Hmm.
It's not?
Oh, it's not. Todd Lee says Todd Lee.
I don't think Todd has much to do with it.
That was my mistake. I'm sorry, and that one.
On, yeah.
It's like.
Hey.
I know.
With that correction of adding Dave's name.
Correction, that would be corrected today. Okay. Um, and I'm not sure which ones you wanna go through first. I know we.
We gotta put on this. Okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries. Okay.
Okay, so, um, I believe we need to figure out the waivers. I did put, um, this is gonna be what we are going to levy for, um, if approved. And then your eligible spreads, it shows all of your landowners, um, that would be over five hundred dollars. The only one that. Could fluctuate just a touch is gonna be one oh three based on the final number, which Colin thinks is gonna be very close to. The numbers that we have in there. Which is. Um. Two thousand six hundred. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine oh seven for DD one oh three. But I got as close as I could for the landowners, um, that would be spread as well for the amounts that they would owe.
So what's the? Question on the? The per payment things then?
Um, waivers, I, based on the amount.
Where you wanna go.
Whether you wanna go, yeah.
Length of time, length.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Length of time. Yes, it's. When you have smaller amounts, you can do a ten-year, but when you get into some of those, you're gonna be very lengthy. Um. Yes. Is there? And then, and then a landowner is always have the option. To pay it.
And then it goes your ten, fifteen, and twenty-year.
Where it goes. Have we ever gone past fifteen years?
There, yeah, there's.
We haven't had a twenty.
It's terrible.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at these numbers. I'm not so sure. We need to go past ten. Yeah, I've been there.
In the past, it's been that the. Interest on the waiver payments is more than if you had a traditional loan.
Yeah, the interest rates used to be lower, now they're higher.
Now it's kind of. It's about the same, you know, close.
I don't, I.
Or it's one oh three, the. That's the lone dog that's gonna be the, probably the most money.
No.
Nasty, sixty-six goes over more acres, so.
Six main tile. Is. A big one, um.
A lot more acres.
It's.
More acres, but individually, it's not, there's only one that has a pretty big.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a.
That's what I mean.
It's a, it's a.
It's a large amount, but spread over a lot of people.
Mm-hmm, correct. And then, um, the third one down, six, I, well, yeah, it's eighteen. Um, also has. You've got your main eighteen, which is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, and then you've got, um, your branches. Which are gonna incorporate some of the same people, so I don't know how you wanna proceed with that one either, but that's. Um, hopefully the tail end of that whole eighteen.
That's.
Long project.
There again. Uh. The lots and lots of acres involved.
Yeah.
We need to have to set a timeframe on the waivers. That's what you're.
Yeah, we, I, yeah, just which ones you wanna put at ten years, um, and then as long as you approve.
This is the total.
This is.
And then it's just the breakdown of the.
The landowners that would be, yeah, or five, five hundred. Yeah, and then some of them have several landowners involved and some not so many. There's. Couple in.
So refresh my memory, if we did fifteen and they walked in and they wanted to pay it, they can pay it.
Yes.
When the. Probably just in once a year, your levy time, and then it's September, can they come in? I don't think they can come in any time of the year to pay it.
I think.
I think they can, they, yeah.
Can they pay at any time of the year?
Yeah.
You can pay any.
This is the levy.
But you have to make a full payment if you're gonna continue to make payments.
Then they would pay each.
Partial payments.
Right, right.
Yeah, so if they wanted.
Can they pay it off any time? I mean, if they make, yes, if they have a ten-year timeframe and they make their waiver payments for five. And the sixth year, they wanna come in and pay off the balance, they can do that anytime of year.
Yep.
They're not limited to coming in in August, September.
No, anytime.
Anytime they want.
And the interest is adjusted accordingly.
Back to what it is, okay. But you're saying if they wanna make a. Practice or a waiver payment, they have to make the full payment when they do it.
Yeah.
So they have a hundred dollar a year payment. They have to make.
They have to make that payment, yeah, and then they can pay it off. If they want to, whenever.
Well, I guess you hate to go with the ten-year, something even fifteen, and you hate to go with the twenty.
It's too long.
Cause it's too long and stretches thing though, and.
I think the ten-year should be fine.
I, I, I'm gonna make a motion for across the board, looking at these numbers, the ten-year waiver payment on the, uh, listed districts.
We have.
I'll second.
We have a second for a ten-year waiver period for all drainage levies. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries. Okay. Now we need to approve the drainage levels. Yeah.
I like.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Any other discussion?
We. This word caught up as. Humanly possible, Carrie.
Yes.
Very good.
Anything else, um, would kind of be beyond the point that it can be finalized and get it done, so. And there's been a lot that has come in. I don't think there's gonna be much.
No, you got, they got the contacts were told that they need to get.
Yes. Yeah, so we have as much in, I think, as we can humanly get in at this point, so.
Really catch things up then.
Hopefully, so, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, unanimous, motion carries.
Anything else in green?
Um, no.
Gonna go on the grid.
In a second, we're gonna go on a drainage at eight fifty-one.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We, obviously, we all need to sign this.
Oh, yes.
Along with Todd Lee here. Okay.
Save on this one.
I know.
Okay, I got a half right.
Yeah.
I have.
Can you get that other one fixed?
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
When you, yeah, before you leave.
Cause since they put the. The whole rock up there, and now it's, this needs to be. Run over, cause it's like a washboard. Well, isn't the one north of, uh, the curve going on a hardy? What he told me.
Andy.
So I take, take it down.
Checks now.
There you go.
First. Or large, or. North of town, the gavel. Yeah, Paul, it's Paul, yeah, and then it's the first gravel, the gravel goes west, or east, excuse me, of.
Red, red autobahn.
Yes.
Hundred and six hundred street.
Right. But it's. More important, yeah. They all know that rock up there, and they haven't been back since.
Come on. So you get to give us the update, huh?
Yeah, I told him, we'll get up there. Yeah, I'll get him up there today. Thank you.
And you have a nice conversation on hundred and eighty street. There's two culverts, the old.
Nobody ever called.
Nobody did.
Meanwhile, we were playing at the same time. Yeah, and he's called for that.
Everything else is good. You look. Special with eight. Thank you. Impressive the interns. We have a top-notch engineer by.
How did the, uh, drive go with your daughter? Did the clutch work out all right?
Did, you didn't hear it when you were walking out to the parking lot? Where, where the tires flew, cause she killed it.
Oh. He'll be all right. He's teaching his daughter how to drive a clutch. I think that's a great thing, so.
Everybody needs.
The block damage.
She, uh, she had a tendency to ride the brakes.
Well, you put three pedals down there, all of a sudden, it's a whole new ballgame with only two feet. All right.
Nice to meet you, Olivia. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You too. All right, well, Gina is here to give us an update on the homestead tax exemption for claimants sixty-five years and older.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, um, on May fourth of this year, Governor Reynolds signed House File seven eighteen, which established a. Homestead exemption for claimants that are sixty-five years or older. So this is something new for our office. And if you are sixty-five years or older on January first of this year, you are eligible to sign. It's just a real simple process to come to our office and sign a form. You still are eligible for the homestead that you've always had. This is just an additional credit. Um, it will be applied as an exemption. I shouldn't say credit, it's an exemption. Um, it will be taken off of the taxable value like the military is applied. And it is worth three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This year, next year, it's going to go to six thousand five hundred dollars off of your taxable value. So we encourage anyone who meets the criteria to do come to our office and. Sign that exemption. We also have availability on our Vanguard website. The form is there. You can fill that out, and then there's a submit button, and it comes right to our office. So you can do it online.
Do it online.
So you said six thousand one?
Six thousand five hundred dollars is what it will go to for January first of twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And. Okay.
Uh, one member of the household or its own jointly, do they both have to be over sixty-five or what?
One member. Just has to be sixty-five, and it does ask for birthday on the form.
Okay.
So this is the time when we're little.
Is this.
Okay, so the thirty-two fifty is for tax year January twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll, you'll pay those taxes the fall of twenty-four and the spring of twenty-five.
So this is basically just an increase in the exemption for full sixty-five and older.
It's something new.
Yes, it is new, something new.
They never had it before, so that's something brand new.
But still the home, it's still considered the homestead act exemption, which you have at any age.
It's going to be a little confusing because they're calling it a homestead exemption, so. We have had confusion.
Thing what sounded. Is this ordinary, or is what we have now as homestead, or is this? Including what we have now for homestead?
It will be in addition to what you have now. Also, the military exemption has currently been an exemption of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And it will go to four thousand dollars, and you do not have to do anything for that. Anyone who has a signed exemption. Uh, the auditor will take care of increasing that exemption. So there's no form to fill out or anything.
That's automatic.
Yep, it'll automatically happen.
I'll be out the office here shortly.
You qualify.
Seventy-five, I qualify. Yeah, you're overqualified.
Heard it on the news on Friday. He was up here on Friday.
Yeah.
And you come, they're like, about two minutes later, he says, our phone lines are flooded. People, you gotta give us a chance to answer, so there's a lot of people listening, and so I'm assuming that you'll probably be.
We've.
Totally busy.
Yes, um, we had a district meeting on Friday, and one of the counties, uh, the day before had had a hundred and ten people at their counter. So we anticipate a lot of people, once the word gets out and, and going. Um, we've had sixty-six people so far, and, um. Three people that have come and signed a military that have never had military before, but just because they heard about that. We increased that they came to the office and found out that they were eligible, so.
That'd be a good reminder that the military is available for them.
Military, or how does that work, Dave?
What was that?
Is that for just anybody that served in the military?
As long as you're a veteran. And served over ninety days.
And.
Qualified as a veteran.
And you went from, how much did you say? I, I didn't write.
Thousand something to four thousand.
Eighteen fifty-two has been the current exemption.
Eighteen fifty-two.
And it's going to go to four thousand dollars.
Perfect. And it's only for the home you live in, right?
Correct.
It's like the homestead.
Yep. Well, a military exemption can be for anything.
Yes, but I mean, this new, this new sixty-five and older.
Is just for the, yes, yes.
Good clarification, yeah. Sometimes.
Did they happen to mention? How the elderly tax credit is going to what the treasures office does? And is that an additional one, or is this replacing that? Cause I think you have to be like seventy for that one?
I don't know anything about that. Uh, we did go to. A solutions meeting last Wednesday, but they did not make any mention about that.
Yeah, maybe the treasures office.
Yeah, I don't know about that. So, um.
But if you're a veteran with a hundred percent.
That's the disabled veterans.
Disabled veterans a hundred percenters.
Right. There's also.
At the day.
Oh.
It, it carries on to.
Okay.
And I guess the other thing that we should mention that you guys are just learning this too, so we need patience, 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 so. Because if we have questions that are asked that we aren't sure of, we're gonna have to check up on it.
There've been a lot of questions asked.
The more you think about it, the more questions come up.
Yes, yeah, there've been a lot of questions. Yes, there have been a lot of questions that have come up.
So we'll do our best to get our questions answered before we.
Well, and we're happy to answer them the best we can. If not, we'll.
We'll figure it out.
See if we can.
Before people start coming through the door, so.
People need to be patient.
Yes, we just wanted to get the word out.
That's awesome.
That's good. We, we've seen several counties, you know, putting some information out there, so we wanted to do that too.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lightning to my wife. There'll be.
Hey, I don't have to worry about that. Everybody knows Leon's older than I am.
Yeah. That's good. You tell everybody.
I didn't.
To. Okay, committee reports.
Oh, let's see here. Like Wednesday. As the Humboldt County Housing. And I'm headed for the conservation and got another call, so I didn't get there. Friday, I went and looked at a couple of workshops up in, uh, Grove Township seventeen. We're gonna carry on that. Up to the contractor on it. Saturday, I put flags up with Bruce's help in the cemeteries. We appreciate all, appreciate all the help we got.
It was a nice one.
And this Thursday at five o'clock, the flags will go up at the courthouse. And they will come down. Uh, Tuesday, the thirtieth, the flags will come down at the courthouse. So if anybody wants to help do that.
Knock on wood, we're, we're hopefully gonna have a bunch of young football kids running, do and throw.
Why don't you ease hold up for the walk?
Good.
Good, great.
After the third cemetery, mind you about.
There was lots of people out there putting stuff up already for.
Yeah.
For Memorial Weekend, but, uh, and they were mowing and so there was lots of activity out there. There's a lot of new zones out in the new part already, holy cow.
It's amazing how fast it grows.
How quick that went.
Alright, Eric.
Uh, no, nothing official meeting wise last, this past few.
Me neither.
Okay, Bruce.
I had, um, Budmo finance meeting on the phone Tuesday, um, Wednesday, I called into the ministerial meeting, we visited about the uh, food pantry and, um, oh, there's a couple of signs that the DOT is talking, uh, about, um, I need to visit with Ben on those. And then, uh, Wednesday, excuse me, Saturday, I went out to the cemetery and helped put up flags. And I guess I would just remind them Thursday, anybody that wants to come, five o'clock. We, they get started and it's a fairly quick.
Boys are trying to beat their own time.
Yeah, they, they start, it's like a race. They started at certain time and they just take off and last year was the last taking them down. We get that kid with, got hit in the.
Yeah, the pipe in the nose or forehead, but.
He was walking and the pipe came around hitting the side of the nose and bloody his nose, but thank God it didn't break. So you have to have your head on a swivel when you.
When you're out.
Cause it's pretty active, so.
Watch out for the boys. They, they set a record in nineteen minutes for a hundred poles and they're trying to beat it.
Oh, wow.
So. I'm sure, uh.
The flag pullers have the hardest time, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keeping up with the flags.
Taking them down is a little more cause you can't get those clips off and then you got a flag over your shoulder and you're trying to. I'm sure Paul will have it all loaded up nice and you look good and.
Yep.
It does look good out there now with the trees trimmed up.
Yeah, so.
Good.
We'll look forward to it.
Alright, on the sixteenth, I had a kitty cat on daycare meeting up here over at the school administration building. And we're just going over the report of the, um, that evaluation that they were doing. We're trying to figure out where we're at. We're working on the food program, also getting that, um, which would help our finances tremendously if we can get that, um, through the state. So we've got a lot of activity going on. We got a meeting this week too, tomorrow and that, so we're meeting with her. And then on Thursday, the eighteenth, I was on at Fort Dodge at Iowa Works. We did the Iowa Workforce Development, North Central Iowa Work Workforce Labor Board. Um, and that was more or less, we we had to have that meeting to finalize all the contracts. We had to, um, cancel our contracts with our um, providers and things like that for, for the services, um, children family services, pretty much almost all the people have applied for Iowa workforce state jobs. And we're very hopeful that they will get hired on with that, which would be actually pretty good because then they'll be on IFRS and that where this would have, um, children family services is a non-crock hall. So actually, it would could be a good thing for them. Um, yeah, and then Friday, we were supposed to have a Zoom meeting with Des Moines. And then they emailed us five minutes before and said, don't need it. So. I'm good with it. That's all I had. Hey, anything else, Trish?
No.
I have nothing. Okay. Maybe another one to sign.
Yeah, okay. This one's great.
Yeah.
That one has Dave's name on it. Alright.
Okay, good.
Motion to adjourn.
Start with that.
Okay, all those are.